Our first item on the agenda is the swearing in of a new member, Ed Farr. Julie?
Hi, Ed.
Hello, good evening.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ed Farr.
I, Ed Farr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the planning commission of the city of Eden Prairie.
Of the planning commission of Eden Prairie.
In the county of Hennepin.
In the county of Hennepin.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Ed.
Thank you.
Okay, if you can please join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and be seated. Okay, our first, well, I guess about our third item on the agenda right now is the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain. So we have the approval of the agenda. Next item is the approval of the minutes from the planning commission meeting held on Monday, March 23, 2015. Does anybody have any clarifications or corrections for the, those minutes? Sounding like everybody saw them good. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the planning commission meeting minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. That's passed. So, let's move on to the public hearings. First public hearing on the agenda is a variance number 2015-01 by Lariat Companies, Inc. The request is to permit transfer of the city code permitting area for wall signs from two tenant spaces located on the north walls of the Lariat Center buildings, three and four, to the south walls of those buildings. Could the proponent come forward, identify yourself, and please tell us something about your project?
I'm Kelly Adams. I'm the real estate coordinator for Lariat Companies.
Kelly, can I ask you to bring the microphones down a little bit? We have a TV audience and they want to hear what we're saying. Thank you.
And I'm short. Our request is for a variance for two of our tenants. We have a new tenant, Body Bright, who is located on the north side of the building, and the entrance to the building is on the south side of the building. So there's no way to get into the building other than that entrance. The area where their sign is permitted lacks visibility. It's really a bad spot. Dick Sports Barber has a sign up that isn't in accordance with the city ordinance. Unbeknownst to us, this sort of came out when we, when Body Bright originally applied for a sign. So the request is for both buildings because Dick Sports Barber is in the same situation, located on the north side of Lariat Center 3, with the entrance to the building on the south side, because the buildings are mere images of one another. So it's a variance request for both buildings for these specific spaces so that these tenants and future tenants can put up a sign that's in accordance with city ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. We'll ask for the city planning report and then come back to you with any questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as the proponent stated, the request is a variance to allow the relocation of the permitted signs from the permitted location, which would be the rear of the building, to the front of the building where it would provide additional visibility and a clearer path for their customers since that is the main access point into the building. Staff is recommending approval of the variance subject to the conditions that are included in the final order that are a part of your staff report.
Thank you. Commissioners, any first blush questions that you have for the proponent or city staff?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could ask a question, clarification on the exterior signs that's in front of the commission tonight versus window signs. I know that Dick Sports Barber has window signs facing north, open, and some poster signs and things like that. Are they regulated in the same manner we're talking about the issue tonight? Or does that fall behind on our conversation?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, wall signs and window signs are regulated differently. So the issue before you this evening is for the wall sign variance. With regard to Mr. Farr's specific question, I can follow up with that with you offline to let you know what those provisions include.
Okay. Anybody else? Seeing as this is a public hearing, is there anybody in the audience who would like to come forward and be heard on this issue? Seeing no one, and if there are no further questions, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to recommend approval of final order number 2015-01, based on plant, stamp dated March 20, 2015, and information included on the staff report, in the staff report dated April 13, 2015.
Second. Again, we have a motion for approval and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Good luck with your project. The next item on the agenda for tonight for our public hearings is Crossroads Center. The request is for a planned unit development concept review on 2.9 acres, planned unit development district review with waivers on 2.9 acres, zoning district amendment within commercial regional services zoning district on 2.9 acres, and site plan review on 2.9 acres. Could the proponent for this project please come forward, identify yourself, and tell us something about your project?
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Scott Nelson. I'm an architect with DJR Architecture in Minneapolis. We've been working with the staff here for several months to come forward with a project that will update both the landscaping and the exterior facade and materials of Crossroads Road Center. I have some renderings and photographs I'd like to share with you. Do I?
Sure, there's a vertical camera right over there. And again, once you get it lined up under the camera, please speak into one of the microphones there. There used to be an X marks the spot. If not?
I think it's right. Is this the spot?
You should flip over to that in a moment. Can we switch the camera to the, there we go. Okay. We're in the, there, you're getting closer.
There you are.
There you go.
This is a photograph of the existing Crossroads Center. You can see it's got a metal panel facade that was damaged in a hailstorm a couple years ago. And the owner liked to upgrade the building instead of just replacing these panels. As part of the replacement, and we looked at, looking at some of the materials that would actually work in here, it's all suspended from a cantilevered structure. So we can't replace this with brick. We need to use something that's fairly lightweight, like the metal panels itself. So we came up with a scheme to, here's the rendering. Maybe it needs to go back a little bit more.
Can we zoom out a little bit?
Little bit, you can see. But basically, what we're proposing to replace the metal panels with is an EFS exterior, canvas awnings. Then we're looking at some stepped cornice work that bring a little more interest and engagement to the whole facade. And all the signage would be new and replaced on top of this facade instead of on the metal panels that was. In addition to the building materials, we're also proposing to revise fairly extensively the landscaping of the center. Right now, there's just a couple of overstoryed trees and some overgrown evergreens. We're proposing to remove the evergreens along the berms, trim up the overstoryed trees so it gives a clear view to the building, and replace and put on top of the berms a series of landscape areas that have patterns of perennial flowers and shrubs that would flower throughout the season. Like, we're trying to show that with our rendering here. It should be more like a midsummer photograph. But there would be different colors of flowers that would bloom at different times of the year. But it would still keep the screening of the berms. In fact, it would add to the screening of the berms that are already there. So we're really trying to enhance the landscape as one of the things that improve the whole look of the strip center. That in a nutshell is what we're proposing to do.
Thank you very much. We'll come back to you with questions if there are any. Julie?
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, as the applicant has stated, they are seeking to do a facade remodel as well as update the landscaping on the site. As a part of that request, it does include a request for a waiver to the construction materials as outlined in code. Code does require 75% of certain materials, including face brick, glass, stone, and other architectural materials. The front elevation of the building proposes approximately 46% EFS with regard to the structural issues that Mr. Nelson pointed out in his comments. And the other three elevations of the building would meet the 75% requirement. In addition, the landscaping that is proposed on the site does exceed the requirements of the city code, and it also addresses the issues that you're familiar with from your recent conversations with the city council about landscaping and architectural materials and design standards. The application you have in front of you tonight addresses that with regard to the landscaping and with regard to the additional architectural materials and elements that are proposed as a part of this PUD concept review.
Thank you. Questions, commission members? Ed?
Mr. Chair, I need to do a few questions. Two parking stalls are being displaced by bike racks. Has it been discussed? Is that loss of parking okay? Or is there another location that has been discussed with the proponent?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the parking that is being displaced due to the bike racks still allows the site to meet the parking requirements of code.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
The curved metal panels on the building that will be replaced with the?
With the EFS facade, that design motif is somewhat carried through on the monument signs at the street at two locations. Maybe this is a question for the applicant. Has there been any discussion about replacing the sign motif as well to be now consistent with the design of the new building facade?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I would defer that question to the proponent.
There has not been?
Please come up to the mics if you would.
The issue of the monument signage. My name is Tim Cashin. I'm the owner of the center. And we have not, that hasn't been raised previously. I don't, I'm trying to think. I don't think that the monuments is as rounded as the building, but it, it's more square, excuse me. Probably in between what the two looks are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ed, do you have any further questions?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Julie, I have a question. The center as it sits today, does the center meet the standards, today's standards, as it is today before the modification?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the center today meets the site plan that was approved back in 1985. In 1985, the 75% rule for construction materials was applied to the building overall. In recent years, the city has changed its application of that consideration to provide for that 75% per facade.
So let me clarify and see, make sure I understand this. So at the time, the entire structure met the requirements as they were interpreted at the time? And really, now there's no substantial change to the proportions compared to that original approval?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that is correct.
Okay. Other questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I follow up on that question?
Sure.
Was there a computation done on the amount of exposed EFS material? The computations seem to always been done as though the awnings weren't there. Does that play into your evaluation? Or what would that percentage be if that was calculated?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the calculation that staff has provided to you is a calculation assuming that the awnings aren't there. It does not take into account the actual exposure. So I would suspect that, of course, that number would decrease if we did an exposure calculation.
Thank you.
Okay, given that this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this subject? Not seeing anyone. Last chance for the commission to ask questions. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Move to recommend approval of the planned unit concept review on 2.9 acres, planned unit development district review with waivers on 2.9 acres, zoning district amendment within the commercial regional services zoning district on 2.9 acres, and site plan review on 2.9 acres as represented in the April 13, 2015 staff report.
Second.
Again, a motion for approval and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Good luck with the project. I think it'll be a nice improvement for the city. Thank you. We have one last item on our public hearing agenda, and that is a code amendment, stormwater by the city. This request is to amend the city code, Chapter 11, Section 11.55, related to stormwater. Julie, who's going to do the presentation on this one?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Leslie Stovering, the environmental coordinator for the city, will be presenting this item.
Welcome back, Leslie.
Hi. Yes, we are here today for the public hearing for the proposed, the draft stormwater rules. I did give a presentation at the last commission meeting, as you remember. But for the new member on the board, I'll just kind of quickly go through what we're doing here tonight. And the basic thing that we're doing is the, our stormwater permit was updated in 2013. And one of the requirements is that we had to add new requirements for what they call post-construction stormwater management. And that basically is looking at infiltration and nutrient reduction as far as what's going to happen after the development is completed. And so there are a lot of new requirements as far as what needs to be done for infiltration, nutrient management, and then long-term monitoring. And while we were there, we decided to go ahead and do a number of editorial cleanups, reorganization, and just kind of separating processes from procedures. That was an attorney request. And so we are proposing to do a complete deletion and replacement with this because it has had pretty extensive changes. The key new section is subdivision 6, which is the stormwater management standards and design criteria. Subdivision 6 only applies to sites that are one acre or larger. And it also includes sites that are being marketed or sold together. And that is so that if a developer came in and bought two parcels, and individually, they're less than an acre, but he's planning on marketing them as one project, and now it's over an acre, now the standards would apply. Unfortunately, in all cases, we may not be able to catch that. It would be kind of difficult. But it is, the state's intent is to try and prevent developers from trying to get around the rules, is what they're trying to do. So there are a number, as you can see here, there's the nutrient management and then the infiltration and volume management. And in both cases, mitigation would be required if the mitigation cannot, if the stormwater treatment cannot be done on-site. For the nutrient management, mitigation is absolutely required. If it cannot be done on-site, it must be completed within 24 months of the start of construction off-site. And if they do decide to do in lieu cash payment, the city would assume that responsibility and would be required to finish the mitigation within that 24-month time period. For infiltration, that has to be done on-site to the maximum extent practicable. And then if they're unable to do it, we will be requiring that they do a cash in lieu so that we can build up resources to do mitigation for the infiltration within that watershed in the future. There are a number of prohibitions and restrictions as far as infiltration because obviously we do not want to impact the groundwater unfavorably with infiltration. The prohibited ones are pretty clear-cut. You can't be too close to a municipal well. There has to be more than three feet of separation between the saturated soils and the top of the bedrock. There cannot be known levels of, high levels of contaminants. It cannot be on like a gas station site or somewhere where they're doing fueling or maintenance for vehicles. Restricted areas would look, would require additional analysis to show that it would not impact the groundwater. So there are sites here, like the drinking water supply management area is basically two-thirds of the city. But it's not saying we can't do it in our drinking water supply management area. It's just that they have to show that conditions are such that it would not impact the groundwater. And that is the same for like if there's historical vehicle fueling, if it's close to a salt storage area, or if it's close to the elevation of a wetland. Or let's say it has really sandy soils and it would infiltrate really fast. Or on the other hand, what if it has clay soils? Is there a way to do infiltration? So that you can have to do additional analysis to look at those. So basically, those are the new requirements. The rest of it is just basically cleanup. The last time we did an update was in 2002, so it's been a while. And that's basically, or 2006, I'm sorry. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Questions? I think most of us were here for your presentation before and have a pretty good understanding. Again, given that this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this subject? Not seeing anyone. I think, yes, Anne.
I have one question that just came to me while we were talking. Given the option for the developer to say, "I'll pay for the city to take responsibility," what harm or not harm, potential risks does the city have to weigh in terms of? At that point, is there a decision the city could make to say, "No, we think you can do this," and go into some kind of negotiations, you know, process? Or is the decision, once the developer or whoever is involved says, "I want to work with the city and pay for what the city's going to need to do because we are not thinking that we want to go forward ourselves to do it." I'm somewhat unaware, I am completely unaware, actually, about whether this is currently something the city has done in certain circumstances in the past, or if this is brand-new. It sort of felt like to me that it was new, but I don't really have the background to know that.
Yes, this is entirely brand-new. And there are, you know, the developer is required to show to the maximum extent practicable whether he can or cannot do it. And he has to look at a number of things as far as green tech, you know, green infrastructure. If he shows that he just cannot fit it in either financially or, you know, land space-wise, or there's the wrong kind of soils where it's a gas station or whatever. There are, the city could look at taking on that responsibility. Obviously, it would put us in a time crunch. 24 months for a city process to get through is, you know, that's pretty quick sometimes because it looks, we would have to look at, where are opportunities to do the mitigation? How do they, they're supposed to look within the same sub watershed? Are there opportunities in that sub watershed? Would there be a land purchase cost? And then, of course, there's the monitoring and maintenance because once it's built, we have to maintain it forever. So there are some considerations that would have to be taken. But on the other hand, if it's a site that we would normally, we would put a drainage or utility easement over it anyway, you know, that might be something that we could do. And we do have a number of reports that we're working on for some of our sub watersheds that do show project needs. So they could potentially be used to offset this.
Thank you. Other questions? If there are no other questions and no questions from the audience, I will entertain a motion.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
And I'd move to recommend approval of the code amendment to Chapter 11, Section 11.55 relating to stormwater as represented in the April 13, 2015 staff report.
Second. Again, a motion for approval and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. That ends our public hearings for the evening. Next on the agenda is the planners' report. Julie?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I wanted to remind you that Wednesday morning at 7:30 in the heritage rooms downstairs here at City Center, there will be a presentation that provides interested parties with information on the outcomes from a recent charrette that staff had conducted at consultants' offices with regard to station area design for the five proposed LRT stations within Eden Prairie. So please feel free to come and see the presentation, get an update, and weigh in. I do have another item that I'd also kind of like to remind you of. It's a save-the-date type of item. The boards and commissions banquet will be scheduled for May 13. So of course, you will all be invited, and invitations will be forthcoming. But just so that you can get it on your calendars.
And I think as the senior member sitting here, I highly recommend it. It's always an enjoyable evening. Okay, next on our, is that all, Julie?
Yes.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the members' report. Community Advisory Committee report. Do we have one this time?
I don't have one as a member, but.
As not a member, I do have something to report that relates to the topic of the light rail development. I did attend an open house last week here at City Hall in which the project office presented some information about their current thinking about designs of the various stations that would be placed here in Eden Prairie. It was, and also gave the people in attendance, and I would say maybe there were 40 to 50 people. Rod, you were there, I guess. I don't know if that's a good count or not. But it was, it was very well done and very helpful. I basically went and listened a lot to what was being said by folks who were attending from the community. And I was not aware that there were any particular concerns about the design, the way platforms, and whether it was a full-service platform or had two, both sides of this rail, or any of those issues. However, I did pick up on one thought, and I did mention it to staff. The area at Southwest Station, that's- Station, that's going to involve also building an additional parking ramp and so forth, and it's going to be a big effort to get all of that together, I understand. But one of the things that did occur to me as people were talking was that they kept mentioning, a couple of them started, one did, and then another person kind of chimed in, that the wind that blows through that area from the highway is significant, and in the winter, that is a very difficult place to wait for transportation, or when you are returning, if you're being picked up. And it occurred to me that with light rail, we're going to have a lot more people, a lot more frequently over an extended period of time, and I know that at this stage, or I don't know, but I did not hear from staff from the project office, that they have been thinking particularly about how to deal with it, other than the shelters that they've already got concepts for. Those shelters, I don't think, are going to do it. So, from my perspective, that needs more attention. Maybe it will just be the angle at which the light rail comes through there, and maybe there's some other way of protecting that particular platform or the people on it from some of that wind, but in the winter, that's going to be a big issue, I'm afraid. At least, it concerns me. I've seen members of my family and other people that I've picked up at the station, but right now, you can go into the bigger buildings, either with a ramp or in the depot area, and if you really need to get out of the way of the weather, but I'm not sure that works with light rail as well. So, that's my only other thought. I would suggest, if you're, any of you would like to see more of the detail, I did bring a couple of the materials that were at the meeting, but you could also go to the light rail website. It's swlrt.org, or there's a phone number on these materials, it's 612-373-3800. I'm sure they have more copies of the materials that they gave us. They gave us a copy of the, and I know some of the folks that are on the citizen advisory committee already have these, but of the current design, just the general ideas that they've proposed, and they're kind of in keeping with the blue line that's already in existence, is more importantly, the green line, actually, because that's the one we're really going to directly link to. And so, they aren't fixed yet, but they're going to have to come to some decision soon. The art director for the area development of those stations was also present, and I did talk to her. My background with the Heritage Preservation Commission, I suggested she might want to look, maybe with respect to one or more of the station designs, at what various entities, such as Eden Prairie Center, has taken some of the material from the old pictures of Eden Prairie over the years and put them in various locations on the ground level of the Eden Prairie Center that also exists in a couple of other smaller shopping areas, in the enclosed areas, so that maybe there would be something related to that or other material that they might be able to look to. And then mentioned that we have a museum here at City Hall, and they might want to look at some of the materials that we have in our collection.
Good.
That's it.
Interesting thoughts and observations. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have a members' report?
I would like to say thanks for bringing up the wind issue that came up. That is something that has been discussed at the community advisory committees, especially with that balance between heaters and shelter and snow removal, so I'll bring that feedback back. Thanks.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, if I might, I had the pleasure of attending the same meeting, and it certainly resonated a lot of the same issues that you brought up. One of the things I noticed that, from the green line, as they presented all the station designs, they were rather generic in nature, and they did cushion that with how they can be customized according to the stop, and appreciate your input on what could happen potentially at Eden Prairie Center. What was running through my mind is the potential for a Eden Prairie city identity on some of those box arches that are upon approach of each of the stations that could establish a city identity above and beyond any customization that we may have for art or the particular destination. So, just a comment.
Very interesting thought. Some good stuff.
Follow-up question. Are you talking above the roof line on the various designs?
Yes, there were some images, I don't have them at my disposal, but upon the train entering the station, there's a rather tall, maybe 25-foot tall, I'll call it a box arch, a structural element that seems to be a common theme as you approach every station. The differences between their three station types were some subtleties in the roof line canopy. And so, they admitted that those box trusses could get some art or informational pieces or be painted different colors potentially. So, I just kind of immediately thought of, you know, the Eden Prairie logo or "Welcome To" or something like that, that puts our stamp on each one of our five stations above and beyond the customization for each station location.
Thanks for the feedback.
Actually, I kind of like that. I like that thought.
Anything else? Okay. Continuing business? New business? If none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn the planning commission meeting?
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Meeting adjourned.